Like to have approval of the minutes. Do we have anyone that make a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion for approval of the minutes.
We have a second.
I second.
All approve, raise your right hand. It's approved unanimously. Okay, new business. Deion Brandy.
Thank you Chair. We first have Oak Springs Development.
Let's do the, back up to the roll call.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Start with Cheryl Mimi.
Samantha Towns, present.
Dennis Kaye, present.
Michelle Reese, present.
Okay. Sorry, Tim, go ahead.
No problem, thank you. For the Oak Springs Development, we're looking at a comprehensive plan amendment and a conditional zoning running concurrently. The request is to amend the comprehensive plan for a higher density on approximately 28.284 acres. The current comprehensive plan future land use is low-density residential. The proposed comprehensive plan future land use is high-density residential. The rezoning for the same acreage, the current zoning is a single-family, low-density residential, SF1, and also some parcels that are in Union County are 20 residential. The proposed zoning would be conditional zoning on the entire property for single-family, high-density residential. That would be a CZ SF5. The applicant is JBH Development LLC. The intent is the construction of 174 single-family detached homes, including a dog park, playground, walking trails. Concurrently, working with town council, there is an annexation for this, for those properties that I mentioned, and it's annexation number 154. Here's an aerial map of the property. You can see the Indian Trail, Expressway coming through, neighboring Stallings, and little pockets, little pockets of Union County all around. Here's the concept plan for the development. North is going a little bit to the side, so you have Oak Spring Road along here, the Expressway, and also Strand Drive, or it's also called Oscar Robinson Drive, that runs just beside the Expressway. This is another shot of the site, a little closer up aerial. That same Oak Spring Road, the Oscar Robinson Drive and the bypass. Some photos of the site. Top photo looking south along Oak Spring Road. We've got a photo on the bottom looking north. The top photo looking southwest along the Oscar Robinson Drive, and the bottom photo looking north from the intersection with Oscar Robinson, the property on the left. Existing zoning map. Existing zoning map, you can see the Indian Trail colored zoning areas with SF1 in the area, split by the Expressway coming through, some light industrial in the area, and some more SF1 below, and the little pockets of Union County and Stallings over to the west. Future land use map. Future land use map showed the property is low-density residential. This was set with a comprehensive plan. Analysis and details, site and lot density. There's 174 single-family lots. Total site acreage, 62.61 acres, which looking at the total property is 2.78 units per acre. Total lot acreage, just looking at lots, and that's how the UDO approaches it, is 5.52 acres per acre, units per acre, excuse me. And that leads us to the SF5 district, which begins at 5.45 units and up. Land use district densities, the table on the chart there shows other areas, some of the neighboring Stallings land use comparisons with a couple of the mixed-use areas at a little bit higher density. Our SF5 district begins at 8,000, and the mixed-use that's in the area begins even denser Traffic impact analysis mitigation, there's several points that were in the traffic impact Some of the areas, no suggested improvements, or outside the Indian Trail area, and then the other suggestions for improvements to be made, or options for improvements, are all listed in the packet. There's the map that's included in the packet with the suggested improvements in red. Schools, school impact analysis, analysis projection for school year 2024 through 25. Kindergarten through high school is projected at 169 students. Union County provided their input and reported Stallings Elementary School with 81% capacity, Porter Ridge School with 89% of capacity, and Porter Ridge High School with 92%. And as they always note, additional development contributes to, you know, additional students. Union County Public Works, they've provided conditional approval. There's an existing water main on Oak Spring Road, off-site water main extension required, off-site sewer line extension with easements required. Union County Environmental Health provided conditional approval. Project to be reviewed and site plan review for all existing structures, septic systems and/or wells. That's their standard response back, to make sure those are covered. Union County Sheriff's Office recommends any traffic calming devices that can be provided will help, calming devices or signage. And Union County Fire Marshal stated that civil plans will require details regarding hydrant distribution. Also, a fire truck plan was provided to run a fire truck through the development. Community meetings. Two meetings were held on July 2nd. Nine people attended. Questions were answered by the applicant about the project. Comments included, concerns about traffic, it's already congested on school days. Developer did state that homes will be built over a period of four to five years. Too many homes at one location. There was a suggestion for a roundabout on Oak Spring Road. There was a suggestion for a berm along the roadway, and they mentioned an example of the neighborhood Sterling Manor subdivision. If homes look like it, it would look nice. Any other of the feedback was provided in the packets in the minutes. So, recommendation, even though the request, since the request was not consistent with the comprehensive plan, they submitted the request to modify the comprehensive plan, which is the CPA 2019 0039 case. They want this conditional zoning to go from SF1 to SF5. Both requests still promote a goal of the comprehensive plan that's provided in the staff report for land use and housing, providing diverse land uses and densities. It's a reasonable request, and staff recommends approval of both cases with conditions. The first set of conditions are, since this is running concurrently, are with the comprehensive plan amendment, the CPA, and so that's simply that the request is contingent upon the other two cases passing. So, pretty much, all three, since they're running concurrently, all depend on each So, the conditions for the conditional zoning, there's multiple, they're provided in the packet, but once again mentioning the request is contingent for the conditional zoning, it's contingent upon the annexation and on the comprehensive plan amendment. I'll try to shorten these, but, you know, staff to confirm with outside agencies that comments are addressed. The development shall comply with the unified development ordinance where it goes outside of what's approved in the conditional zoning. Town approval incorporates and shall comply with all, any and all submittals in the case file that correspond to the approval, once presented to town council and approved. Fifth condition is that to work with the US Postal Service and make sure the cluster mailbox meets their requirements for access and locations. Architecture should remain the same as submitted in the concept plan, or at least in, you know, with the details provided in the approval of the plans. Amenities include playgrounds, dog parks, and other recreation areas. Traffic calming measures are required and locations to be approved by the town engineering department. Parking areas add amenities to be provided. Signage entrances, that no on-street parking allowed per town ordinance, Chapter 71 parking And so that brings us to, through the presentation from staff, and to the next steps, back to you, Chair.
Okay. Just take a second. If there's anyone else in the room that'd like to sign up for public comments, we have a form here. If you want to take a minute or two, come up and sign your name and street address. Anybody else want to sign up for a comment? Okay. Okay, before we start with the comments, the town attorney asked us to read this prior to the comments. Unfortunately, over the past several weeks, certain individuals, or citizens rather, have attended public hearings of this and other town boards and caused disruption, including comments deemed racist and threatening. As a result, I want to clarify for those in attendance the following. You may not speak until recognized and invited to speak by this board. Any comments or outbursts from the audience will be considered a disruption of the meeting, and the person causing the disruption will be warned once. Upon a second comment or outburst, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience, as well as the speakers, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public hearing. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or this board reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. So, anyway. Okay, we're going to start with public comments, and the first one would be Barbara Duke. Please come up, state your name, your address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments.
Hi. What I just wanted to say is, I'm one of the families that's selling the property for this development, and I wanted just everyone to know that we would not have just sold this to anybody to put anything out there. We thought this was a very good development that looked very nice, with nice homes, no vinyl, and we just was, we're doing this because we think this was the right developer that we wanted to go with, and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Chris Daniels, please come up, state your name and address.
It's Chris Daniels. It's 2549 Oak Spring Road. I apologize, I didn't know we were only going to have three minutes. On July 2nd, we attended a public hearing. In that hearing, we were presented a document that I'd like to present. That document said that the zoning requirement was going to be SF4, and then we received a letter last week saying now the zoning is SF5. Don't understand why. We were told that the house per square footage was 2.7. We just saw documents that show now that the house is 5.5. Also, we requested that, per the diagram, where the open areas are on Oak Spring Road, that a berm be built. And the reason for that is because the developer currently has houses on Stallings Road, and I can see in every single person's backyard from Stallings Road when I'm driving. I'd ask those to be submitted. Along with that, I've got a FEMA, a year ago, today, we ran emergency because of Florence. I've got a FEMA drawing that shows where the creek should flood, and then I've got a picture that shows where the creek actually flooded, and the two don't match. Now, I'm by no means a FEMA expert, but I know a year ago, we were all sitting around trying to figure out what was going on, whether our houses were going to be flooded. My concern is, is that if a development, and they push dirt in the wrong way, that is going to push additional flood downstream, that's going to impact everybody that's downstream. So, that means everybody in Hemby Bridge, everybody in Indian Trail, and then the rest of Union County. I don't know if that's the case or not, but that's the concern based on where we were last year on this day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, I'm Ron Porter. We live at 7216 Oak Spring Road. We're across from a good little bit of this, from top to bottom almost. My main concern is, that's a lot of houses, a lot of cars, there's two parking spaces per house allowed it. If you put all them cars out there at one time, they're going to line up the whole road. I know that probably never happened, but you can get half of them out there or something at one time. We've had traffic backed up to the bridge before, something went on, I don't know. I just wonder now if we're not going to have it almost every day that way, because that's a lot of cars to dump in that little road, and there's no way to get out, especially DOT, it's about closed any section, any trail now. Got to go around by elbow to get your hand now, or get your nose, whichever way that works. But, you know, got to go out that way. Oscar Robinson are coming back out to Oak Spring Road. Everything's going out of Oak Spring Road, a little two-lane country road, there used to be. It was gravel when our house was built, actually. I sort of wish it was now, but, you know, we've got a lot of concerns with that on that road. Also, the creek that Chris mentioned a while ago. We have cows in there in the pasture. I have this pass, last summer, pulled one calf out drowned, caught in one of these rushes of water when we have so much rain coming down. It comes up to the fence at our garden now sometimes, occasionally, and it can't get anything any worse. I mean, they said they got a retaining pond or something on, if that's what they call it, to stop the water coming out of housing development, but roofs and driveways make water problems. I mean, it's everywhere. So, I'm afraid we're going to get a lot more water, it's going to be rushing a lot harder. As of right now, from Forest Park, we get tires. I've got a mounted wheel with a tire with air in it. I guess it's in pretty good shape. It's come down that creek. We get barrels, we get construction debris, all kind of things come down there. More water we get coming, the worse it's going to be. And it does flood on down, but, you know, at the bridge, it's been up over that bridge a couple of times that I can remember. I mean, it starts around it and over the road, but it actually goes over the bridge when it gets really bad. And when it does that, people don't want them going down the bridge, down the road because they're afraid of, and I don't blame them. Damage to the bridge is always a possibility. I just feel like that, you know, the amount of houses that they're wanting to put in there is ridiculous, my way of looking at it.
Thirty seconds. You have thirty seconds.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
You know, SF1s, what is that? Why can't it just stay that way? Build some bigger, nicer houses maybe in there. But, you know, if it's got to go more, maybe we could split it or something, but building a house on top of a house, that's not my way to live, but I guess that's what they want to build. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Kevin Porter.
Yeah, Kevin Porter, 2632 Oak Spring Road. I'm kind of adjoining the property. My biggest concern is, again, the water situation. I've got documentation of where it floods, and this was well before. You go and add a bunch of asphalt, a bunch of houses, where's the water runoff going to go? They can build a retaining pond, but it's not going to hold it. They can't build one big enough. Traffic, you're going to build 174 houses on 31 acres, basically. That's two cars minimum per house. You're going to add to traffic. The issue now is, they're going to add a turn lane, a right turn lane to end Oak Spring. Well, the problem is, you can't turn left. You've got people coming down Stevens Mill from Fairhaven. The problem is, you can't make a left turn there, and that's what backs the traffic up to the bridge. So, my biggest concern is the water and the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This time I close public comments, and turn it back over to you, Tim.
Thank you. I guess, is there, I'm not sure if you have any discussion or questions. Oh, 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 I've got the applicant to present, I'm sorry.
Please. Tim, I'm going to get. What do I need to do to kind of, Brandy, can you help me?
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Bart Hopper. I'm with Hopper Communities, and we appreciate you taking the time to hear about our project on Oak Spring Road. Oh, you got it, thank you. We put together, it's in your packet as well, but we put a little presentation together that I won't, it's been too long. Okay, Brandy, am I just hitting the button? I can do that. So, this is a little about who is Hopper Communities. We're a development company that specializes in the design and creation of residential development neighborhoods. Established in 2007, I've been doing this for many, many years, too long to count. It says 25 years, but it's probably closer to 30. We've done office projects in Charlotte, Raleigh, Durham, Charleston, South Carolina, and Austin, Texas. Our goal is to leave a positive imprint on communities and deliver lasting value to the homeowners. These are some examples of some projects that we've been involved in. Sterling Manor, which you mentioned, is in Stallings and very close, if not almost adjacent to this property. Vickery in Stallings was a project that we put together. Falls Cove in Troutman is a large, I would only get three minutes?
No, you get longer.
Okay. Developer usually gets longer, but. 630 home sites for the Falls Cove project. Stonewater Bay in Mount Holly, a 390 home site community. Arbor Miller in Huntersville, 280 homes. South Point at South End Town Homes is a project kind of right near downtown. Myers Park Terraces is in Myers Park. Uptown West Terraces is right near downtown in the Wesley Heights area, and then Grandy Heights Town Homes is a similar area. These are some examples of some homes and some monumentation and neighborhoods that we've done in the past, something comparable to what we'd be doing here. You see Vickery and Sterling Manor, both right here in this area. Here's an overall map that shows the site location. Shows now with the Monroe Expressway coming through and the roads, various proximity to the schools and whatnot, 485. Total number of acres, so we're purchasing 62.61 acres, and on that, we will have 174 lots. The overall density for this 62.61 acres that we are purchasing and developing is 2.78 units per acre. We've got dedicated on-street parking spaces in working with Todd and his group, and for additional 31 spaces along the streets. Not to mention, there'll be two car garages with a driveway of 20 feet to allow for two more cars. So theoretically, you could have four cars there, plus your parking. So, we feel like we more than adequately addressed the parking. And then we've got the TreeSave area. Based on your code and zoning, it's required that you have 7.91 acres. Well, we're providing 12.16 acres, far, you know, exceeding it by quite a bit. Open space requirement is 15.65 acres. We're providing 21.14 acres on this proposed plan. This is the plan that we originally submitted, when, I guess, at the time Rawls was working here. We've been working with your staff for over a year now with this project, and this was the plan that we originally submitted, based on kind of some feedback from, I guess, Rawls in particular, about maybe some providing townhomes too as another alternative, you know, for living. And this was the plan we had, you know, I can't read it, you guys might be able to, but it was over 90 townhomes and single-family, and the overall density was quite a bit higher, actually, than what we're, went back. When we met with council, they said, "Well, I don't think townhomes are a good idea," so we went back to the drawing board, if you will, and came up with this plan that provides all single-family. And all the notes are notes that we carefully worked with, you know, with your staff and team on. I'm going to let on the traffic and what we're doing. I've got, we hired, we had to do it, we did a TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, it's a requirement here, and we had a design resource group provide the report, and I brought Michael Wickline with me, who is the senior manager on this job. So, I wanted him to kind of maybe walk through exactly what we are providing for the property. Just take a minute or two.
So, it's worth noting that the TIA has been approved by the town, worked directly with Todd and Tim, and also, there's been a cursory review provided by NC DOT. They provided recommendations and pretty much came in line with what came out of the TIA from the town requirements. The only thing in addition to add on that is, NC DOT is not necessarily requiring any roadway improvements as a part of the TIA, because they didn't require a TIA, because the trips for a site this size does not meet their threshold for a traffic impact analysis. So, they do hold the right to require some improvements during their permit process, because driveway permits will be needed on Oak Spring Road, as well as Oscar Robinson or Strand. So, there could be some additional improvements that come out more than what you see. One of the ones that is required by NC DOT as a part of the driveway permit is what's on the screen now. It's a left turn lane that's dedicated on Oak Spring Road into the site, so any left-turning traffic entering the site will be out of the travelway. There won't be any type of spillback that could potentially cause a backup on Oak Spring Road. The other improvement is actually down. It's on Stinson Hardest at Indian Trail Fairview Road. It's going to be an additional left turn lane to separate the traffic. This showed increased benefits. There was actually two options we looked at. This was NC DOT and the town's preferred option. What this will do, this will allow for any left or turning right, or any left-turning or right-turning traffic to be separated. Therefore, you know, if someone's waiting to turn left onto Indian Trail Fairview, which is a fairly busy road, the people that are wanting to turn right, which is, you know, seem to be the higher volume in the people that are wanting to turn right, which is, uh, you know, seem to be the higher volume in general, will have more of a free movement and won't have to be stuck behind someone that's waiting to turn left. That's pretty much what we have in terms of the improvements at this point. Um, again, there are some other improvements that, or that NC DOT could require. Um, but at this point, this is all that has been required by the town.
And Michael will be here for any questions you guys have once we're done here. This is kind of, shows us the walking trails. Uh, Tim mentioned this, and the, you know, an example of the entrance monument. You know, dog parks or something that we've noticed a lot of people have dogs. And so we always try to do a nice dog park with benches and that type of thing. And then a playground. These are examples of homes, uh, that would be in the neighborhood. And I think we also mentioned some of the other projects that we've, we've done in the area. This is kind of an overall home styles and materials breakdown. Be one and two-story homes, slab or crawl space foundation, roofs of asphalt shingles or standing seam metal. All detached homes, you will have in a closed garage for at least two cars. And then I also mentioned that the driveway spec, which allows for two more cars. Materials, brick and tile masonry, stucco, you know, in, in at least small accent or decorative uses. Native or synthetic stone is something we'd be using. Wood lap, fiber cement, wood shingle siding, and vinyl siding, uh, will not be permitted. That is all we have for here, for, for me. Obviously, we're here to answer your questions. And again, we, we just appreciate your time and consideration of our proposal. And we have appreciated the opportunity of working with your staff with this project. And I look, look forward to any questions and feedback that you guys have. Uh, one thing I might, just kind of, if you would, also, like, I think I could get, I heard, we've heard some of the things. We did have neighborhood meetings and we appreciated the neighbors. I had, they had the, I think this, the, uh, the, the, uh, storm runoff was one concern. And then the berm. We are going to put a, we did agree, we are going to put a berm along Oak Springs Road after, as a result of the neighborhood meeting. And then I'm going to let Brett, our engineer, kind of address, Brett Cowan with Isaac's Group, address what exactly we'll be doing in terms of the development to, you know, assure that we're not, certainly not increasing any flooding from what we do. Hopefully, that'll kind of help.
Uh, good evening. My name's Brent Cowan. I'm an engineer with the Isaac's Group. And, uh, we've been doing the, the land planning on this project, uh, to date. A couple of things that I heard mentioned concerns floodplain and then stormwater management. Um, there is FEMA regulated floodplain on this property. Uh, something that we recognize right off the bat. Uh, our layout has been designed as such so that we're not, we're not doing any fill in that floodplain whatsoever. Uh, I, I will admit, I'm not completely up to speed on the town's floodplain ordinance because we're out of it. But, um, many municipalities allow fill in the floodplain, so long as you permit it through FEMA. There's a process you go through. So if the town allows it, it would be within our rights to fill in that floodplain, but we're not. We're, we're staying out of it. Um, there's, there's a couple of lines on, on any floodplain map. There's, there's lines that are really close to the channel. That's called a floodway. And then as you go away from the channel, there's a 100-year floodline. And then many times, there's community floodlines. And those are like future, future floodlines. We're out of all of those. And what that line closest to the channel is, is it's a theoretical, excuse me. It's a theoretical line where if you, if you filled in the floodplain up to that floodway line, you built a retaining wall right on that line, you will not increase the flood elevation more than one foot. So FEMA studies it and they, they, they do models and they, they, they do cross-sections and they study it and they, they put that line and they start to back it up to the point where that flood will only raise a foot. So it's just a little bit of background on what you could do in it, but we're not doing any of that. We're staying out of it entirely. Uh, the flood, the floodline does, I heard someone say the, the road is sometimes underwater. And that's true. This, this flood, this FEMA flood map shows the road being topped. Um, but we're not contributing to that. We will have a stormwater management pond on this, on this project that will meet the town's codes. The town says we have to, um, the state says we have to treat the first inch of runoff to, to, to remove all the pollutants from it. And then the town's ordinance says we have to detain the two, 10, 25-year storms. And we will, we will have a, you know, pond that meets those requirements. So that's.
And then the berm, you might want to point out.
Oh, yeah, the berm. Um, we have some trees, existing trees that are up on the road. In those locations on, uh, on Oak Springs Road, on those locations, we're not providing a berm. But in some other locations, we are providing a berm and we're landscaping it. So, you know, the intent is to hide the houses. And that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Brett.
Okay. Who would like to start with questioning from the board?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Mimi. Um, I just had a question just in concern of the residents that shared, as well as what you've got, what you just shared about the water runoff. My question is, in treating the water runoff, how will this affect the other residents, the neighbors who live near the subdivision? Like, when you're treating it, how will it, you, you may take care of your, that new subdivision, but what effects would it have on the neighbors?
That's a great question, Cheryl.
So the first requirement is to treat the first inch of rainfall. Uh, that's the state's requirement. And what that is intended to do is, is once you have parking lots and rooftops, there's, there's, the water's dirtier than it is today. So the ponds are designed to, to remove all those pollutants from that first one inch of runoff. So that's a water quality measure. So then we get into water quantity. Uh, and then those are bigger storms above that first inch. And what, what we're tasked to do is, we calculate what the runoff is in a certain storm event, 210, 25. And after the project is, is developed and we have that pond and the, and the water drains into that pond, we cannot release the water any faster post-development than what we calculated the pre-development flow to be.
So, send a little more from my layman. It can't, it won't, it'll be, it won't be any worse than it already is for the surrounding. It's, it's at least status quo with what we do. You know what I mean? So you can't, you can't make an existing situation worse. And that's not just us and him, but that's, you know, that's what your codes and whatnot, which if you think about it, makes sense. But we can't solve the floods of the world out there either, if you know what I mean.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying solve the floods of the world.
Yeah, I know that.
I'm just, I guess my thing is, um, I mean, thank you for clarifying it because I was looking at him like, okay, I'm a special education teacher, not an engineer. So he was talking way over my head. But, um, I guess, um, I just wanted to make sure that in building it, that building every, anything that is in fair, you know, that it's, that we're being good neighbors. Like, when, before we approve, I mean, I know the final decision isn't ours, but when we approve anything, we want to make sure that it's fair and that it's fine with our neighbors because that's more important.
I totally, we totally understand.
Because you're going to build and you're going to leave. You're going to make your money, you're going to be gone. But they have to live with their, live there, yeah.
Yeah, we, well, you know, we have a reputation and we want to do, we, we're committed to doing the right thing. And again, the engineering, once we get done with all this, it won't be, we'll have it at least as good a condition as it is now, the way it sits.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
Sydney, you have questions?
Yes, um.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to have a homeowner association?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, and is this, uh, development anywhere dedicated towards seniors or?
No, it, it'll be just, it'll be for any, you know, any buyer, seniors, uh, families, just a little bit of everything, anybody.
Okay, and, um.
Yes, sir.
The, um, I notice you're walking trails. Um, and they look sort of, I mean, they, or even walking trails plain, but anyway, I was looking for some kind of, um, benches or something like that on, how many feet, how, how many feet of walking trail do you have?
How many feet do we have? We have quite a bit. I mean, I, four, five thousand.
And Sydney has both my questions, so to piggyback that while we're talking about the lighting trails.
Hold on, let's, let's finish with this one and then come to, hold on.
Okay. Let me, uh, can you give a ballpark? I mean, I can just, I thought we'd looked at it one time.
Half a mile to a mile.
Yeah.
I thought it was four or five thousand feet, but we can measure.
I was saying along the lines of an elderly person walking or either a family with small children, they probably need some benches along the way.
Oh, yes.
And I didn't know if you had set aside any money for that or set aside some money for the homeowner association so they could put them in it as they, as they so desire. I mean, that's, uh.
We'll have, we'll have, we'll have the, have, have the benches there throughout. I mean, you know, not every 10 feet, but we'll have benches.
Well, I understand that.
That, but yeah. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's designed to be an amenity for the community. It's a primary amenity.
Okay. And, um, you know, that may not be your call, maybe the homeowner association let them do that.
No, we'll, we'll end up being the ones that originally put some benches out there, especially around the dog park and the park area.
Okay, I notice you have a second exit over here on Oscar Robinson Road. Is that the second exit? I mean, is that going to be, I mean?
That's a secondary entrance, but people would be able to come through. I don't know. Did you, Michael, did we have kind of a study that showed how many people we thought, based on traffic pattern, would go through that versus the other entrance? Uh, usually they'll do that. I mean, these traffic studies.
Yeah, based on, um, coordination with the town and layout of the houses, it was about 45% of the total site was anticipated to probably use that secondary access. And it also provides a, an additional outlet, an inlet for emergency vehicles. That way you have, you know, in case one entrance is blocked up for any reason or there's any type of emergency situation, there is one entrance and one exit.
Our ordinance does require two, two exits and entrances. That's the reason I was asking to be sure this was going to be a viable, um, access. Because, I mean, we, it's in our ordinance because of, uh, in case there's a major accident at that intersection, everybody would literally be blocked in. So, so that was, um, my concern. And I, and I, I tend to go along with the, uh, person at your, um, meetings that you had about it, being around about it in the end out there. I think that would help the flow of traffic so much better to get, get, keep people moving, keep traffic moving there. So, um, so I, I think that would be a good option, so that's all I have.
Mr. Towns?
I just want to ask you one question. Um, the water. You know, I'm sort of concerned about the water. I'm still concerned about the water. Um, will, the, if the water backs up, will people's backyards be flooded? Or exactly, how is that going to be handled?
So we've done a grading study. And all of our lots are, gosh. I want to say 15 feet, 10 to 15 feet above the 100-year floodplain. So no, no.
So there will be no backyard flooding?
No.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
At some point, you might have it, but, you know, we're going to have a lot bigger problems than that if that, you know, if it was a 1,000-year flood or something, you know what I mean? But.
As long as the backyards aren't flooded to the point where the residents can't use them.
Yeah, well, as, as Brett pointed out, we're staying totally out of the whole entire floodplain area for building. So we're staying, you know, some houses, sometimes they'll have their backyards in the floodplain, you know, and put their house just outside the floodplain. We're not, we don't have any of that going on.
Michelle?
Okay, um, most of my questions were pretty much addressed, but to go back to the walking trails, because that was one that I had too. In the picture that, that I'm looking at on the screen, and I know it shows a very dense, a tree, a lot of trees. And so I just, my question was, um, will they have any kind of lighting? And now, after hearing your answer to the benches and whatnot, I'm assuming.
They will have some benches. I don't know about, I don't think we would see lighting.
It wouldn't be density like this, it'd be kind of wide open.
Right, I mean, it'd be according to topography out there, which is wide open. And we just put that up there as a visual example. We're not, we didn't got.
Okay, just thinking about the safety. And then my next question would be for town staff. Um, am I correct that this has been before council as a different project, as townhomes? And council, um, said that they, uh, had conditions? And this is now the second round when they're coming back?
Well.
Has this been before council before?
Not officially. We had a developer's work, uh, developer workshop where you come in unofficially.
Okay.
And we brought that prior site plan and got, you know, the main comment was, we don't want to have any townhomes if you want to get our support. So we got rid of the townhomes. And there were several other items that we addressed too along the way, but that was the.
So this was one of the workshops before council meeting?
Right, this was the workshop, which we appreciate the idea of, you know.
Yeah, I love them too, they're great.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Anybody else, anybody have more questions? Cheryl, anybody?
Not at this, not at this time.
Okay, we're around.
If I do, I'll ask. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay. All righty, um, I know there's one gentleman back there that's just dying to ask a question, I think.
Yeah, we, we have.
Please come up and state your name again and, um, just one, one more question.
I just want to ask where the, one, where are the walking trails located on the property? And two, where is the floodplain that you're describing? And, um, yeah, explain those to me.
Okay, so the walking trails are this brownish kind of li- line?
Where's that in relationship to the creek?
The creek is.
The creek is right here. And there's a lot, there's a, there's a finger of it. Yeah, so, but the main channel is this right here. What do you base your calculations on? You said it's calculated to be of a lot of water. We, we look at the land, so the pre-developed flow, we look at the drainage area to, to, to the pond. Where's the pond going to be located? That's the pond. And we, so we look at the existing land use. We look at if there's trees, if there's forest, if there's roots, if there's parking lots. And we apply factors to those. You know, trees don't produce as much runoff as parking lots. And houses and roofs. Right, so we, we calculate that. Have you been out there when there's been a heavy rain and seen the effects of it now?
We'll have to cut off the questions. I just want to give you an opportunity to ask. If you, if you, go ahead and answer that.
I have not been out there during heavy. Thank you.
All righty.
Okay, one more question.
Yeah, we've got, we've got four photos that I'd ask you to look at of the creek levels over and above standard. Can I bring this?
If you'd like to give it to Crystal, pass around.
Those are the creek levels over and above, Darren Florence. I'd like you to look at that. Um, two of those pictures are the property that supposedly is, quote, "not in the floodplain." What, what, what we're seeing is, is that the FEMA map is, needs to be updated.
Okay, thank you.
Was this, um, sir, can I ask a question? So, Dennis, can I ask him a question when that picture was taken?
Sir, can I just ask you a question? When was this picture taken?
That, that was Florence.
That was last year's storm? Okay. How, how often does stuff like that happen? Is it just during hurricane season?
It, it doesn't, it, it increases, but not to that level. Um, I, that's only happened, to my knowledge, you have to ask him, they've been here for their whole entire lives.
Okay.
When it went over the road, covered the road, that was not a hurricane by any means. So it was a regular storm.
A regular, regular, you get a lot of rain, regular, okay.
That's not uncommon to see that, those photos.
Okay, closed comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, did you have a question for the engineer?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious. I know in my neighborhood, we have, um, we have like under, when our neighborhood was developed, we have underground like sewage systems. I mean, and they're not sewage systems, I don't know the right thing. But I know we have a way that the water drains underneath our neighborhood. And then it goes off to someplace else. And we were a big farm 100 years ago ourselves. So I just, I know that there's a big concern about the water and you, and you guys have seen it at its absolute worst, you know? Um, but I wanted, my question is, doesn't a development come with something beneath it that has a way to direct the admin flow of water other than? that has a way to direct the admin flow of water, other than going to the retention pond for an engineer or one of, somebody on the development team? Is there something other than the retention pond underneath the neighborhood that directs the flow of the water?
Well, we, we design, uh, and we build storm drainage pipes, um, that are, they're inlets in the road. There's inlets in the backyards. There's swells in the backyards. We get water. Every, every place on the site, we, we design something to take water. That's, that's really my main job, is to get water away from the houses and, and out of the roads.
But does it all flow into the, into the retention pond? If, is that where it's, all of that under, the underwork goes to the retention pond?
It's all designed to go to the, the pond to treat.
Thank you.
Kind of a loop.
Okay. Ms. Towns, do you have a concern that you want to do?
No, you already asked.
About Truick? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I may, I would just like to confirm that the example given of the pictures you saw was a 500-year storm. Um, and then just to reiterate, as the development team has stated, stormwater runoff is handled by engineers. There's a, a science to it. There's intense calculations, um, that even we as planners don't get involved in. So, I just want to caution you that that is actually, um, you know, within our land development standards through the permitting process, verified. Experts are preparing the calculations and then experts on the town side are verifying those calculations. So, that, that's handled through the permitting process and not something that, that planning board should really weigh into heavily, because those requirements are there and they will be met. Thank you.
Oh, since you said that, Brandy, I mean, Ms. Dees, um, so you guys are aware, I mean, I know hurricanes happen. You're gonna get flooding. That's why I was asking specifically what. But since we know this, are they gonna, is the town of Indian Trail gonna prepare themselves, since they are allowing a builder to come in, to reexamine and also to provide the adequate water flow? Since you know this already, that this can happen again if another hurricane passes through, will a town of Indian, town of Indian Trail, um, Stormwater Committee or whoever, engineers or whatever, are you, since you know this already, will you take extra precautions now, since you know that this can happen? With like 100 and something houses coming through?
Right. So, um, the codes and standards are designed to meet 100-year storms generally. Um, you know, hurricanes, natural disasters, things, things like that. I, I think it would be too onerous for a developer to, to try and imagine every scenario and plan for that. But what I will say is that the town's been very proactive.
Okay.
Um, and actually have, we have our own stormwater review in-house, uh, rather than just relying on the state. Um, so, so we've been very proactive in ensuring, through the regulations adopted and through our staff verifying that through the permit process, um, that we're holding developers accountable and we're ensuring, um, for ourselves, not relying on state agencies, but ensuring for ourselves that there truly isn't an impact on a budding property. So, you cannot divert water onto other people's property. You cannot make the situation any worse. But instead of relying on the state to verify that, we, we recently, you know, in past, brought it in-house to, to handle that ourselves.
And one more question to the builders. Um, will you disclose to the, those who want to purchase a home that is a possibility of flooding in the area, so they can get flood insurance if necessary?
Well, they won't need to get flood insurance, because it's not, again, we're not building in a floodplain.
Okay. I'm just asking. Okay.
Yeah. I understand.
Just because, you know.
But yeah, but, I mean, I think we're, we're safe.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. We're closing the questions from the board. Do you want to make your, um, proposal or whatever with the, um?
Sure. I'll, I'll do the best I can.
Okay.
It's a little tricky with both cases. Uh, but the, the first requested action is for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Uh, it's dependent, one's dependent upon the other. But, uh, it's, it's, as with our other voting, it's a two-step process. There's the statement of consistency that, that I can read. But basically, uh, once you know if, if you're going to, uh, someone is gonna make a motion that it is consistent or is not consistent, I can read the consistency statement that would be appropriate. If it turns out that it's not consistent, then, uh, I'll get a reason, you know, because, whatever. And I can include that in the statement that I read. And then we'll go to the, uh, to the vote for approval or denial after that.
Okay. So, we need this point of motion as to whether it's consistent or inconsistent with.
For the Comprehensive Plan Amendment part. And then we'll, then we'll vote on the conditional vote after this.
Right. Do we have a motion, one way or another?
I make a motion to approve that the required consistency findings are approved as explained by staff.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. All opposed? Okay.
And I can read that into record. Um, make sure I've got the right one here. The proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment is consistent. Was that, what was for? Uh, with the following goals of the Comprehensive Plan. As I'd mentioned before in the presentation for land use and housing. Land use and housing goal number one, the proposed project contributes to help create a diverse range of housing options in the town. Number two, this Comprehensive Plan Amendment request is reasonable, is a reasonable request and is in the public interest, because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the area of land use and housing.
Okay. So, we'll need a motion as to.
Is for, uh, if your recommendation for approval or denial.
We have a motion.
I approve it. I mean, I'll make a motion to approve. Which. I'll make a motion to approve, but can I? My second. Recommend, like, making sure, I guess, making sure we're just being good neighbors to our community. You know, when you're building. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Yeah. This, this part of the vote's just a straight approval or denial.
Okay. Yeah.
Do we have a second? And all in favor, right hand? It's unanimous. Okay. We're just a, we're, the planning board is nothing more than a recommending board. Uh, it goes to the town council next, and they make the final decision. So, if you're happy or not happy with it tonight, then, uh, the, the next step would be to go to the town council meeting and address it with the town council member.
Next, next is the second part. Sorry, the, the conditional zoning part. That was just for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So, we've, we've got another similar.
Step to go.
Step, two steps to go. So, there's two steps for this as well, for the conditional zoning. So, uh, if, if you're gonna do, is consistent or is not consistent, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we find it can, to be consistent as staff has explained.
Do we have a second? All in favor, right hand? Okay. It's unanimous.
I'll, I'll read that one. It's very similar to the other. The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the Comprehensive Plan. Land use and housing goal number two, the proposed project contributes to help create a diverse range of housing options in the town. This rezoning request is a reasonable request and is in the public interest, because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the area of land use and housing.
I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? All in favor, right hand? When is the town council meeting for this project? We'll need notification, October the 8th?
October the 8th.
October the 8th. Okay.
Property owners will be notified again as part of that process.
Okay. Okay. So, um, it won't, then, this won't be final until the town council meeting, so I would encourage you.
That is the projected date.
Projected date.
But they will, um, just please pay attention to the notices that come in the mail for, for the, the certain date. But it's proposed October the 8th.
Okay. So, the council folks are the ones who make the final decision. So, um, you'll be getting something in the mail on that date, for that date. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have, we have a restaurant and a small hotel, very small hotel. Hotel, but, uh, park, very small. Do what? I meant to tell them my code then. I just got the code. Indian Trail Road.
See this to my daughter. She won't be answering.
Do we have anybody left? We'll take a couple of minutes and let everybody clear out. Okay. Are we ready to, for the next one?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, our second agenda item tonight is 203 South Indian Trail Road, ZM 2019 0056. And this is a request to rezone approximately 1.31 acres from single-family residential SF1 within the downtown overlay to central business district within the downtown overlay as well. Applicant is Mr. Joe Satino. This is the subject property located on South Indian Trail Road. It's nestled between South Fork and Park Drive. Existing zoning, all of the blue is central business district. And the, the white grayish is the SF1. So, you'll notice that, um, somewhat of an odd-shaped parcel is the parcel that we're considering highlighted in red. Future zoning causes this area out to be mixed use. This property is located in the down, downtown village overlay and surrounded by a mix of land uses. The proposed central business district, um, is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future land use map. And it's consistent with the surrounding zoning as well. This request also promotes the goals of the Comprehensive Plan by meeting the following goals. Downtown revitalization, economic development. This is a reasonable request and staff recommends approval. The board must follow the usual two-step process when taking action. The first vote on the consistency statement and then to approve or deny. Now, this is a straight rezoning, no comprehensive plan needed, update needed, um, like the previous request. So, it's a little bit simplified. Also, I wanted to let the board know that originally this request came in and was submitted as a conditional zoning request. However, the TIA and comments from NCDOT have stalled the project for, for several reasons. Um, there's a planned roundabout and, and other factors. So, the applicant fully intends to pursue the conditional zoning request in the near future. However, in order to close on the property, um, the applicant wishes to ensure the property in its entirety is zoned commercial. Um, and as much as we want to review the details of the proposed development, um, I just caution you that this is a rezoning and the board's decision should be based on the appropriateness of the map amendment and not specific details of, of the plans that the developer may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, at this point, do we have anybody here that wants to make comments toward? Do we have a sign-up sheet? No comments? Okay. All right. So, open and closed public comment. And now, uh, would the, um, builder or promoter of this project like to get up and give a presentation?
Thank you. My name is Steve Singleton. I'm a planner and landscape architect with Bowler Engineering. So, we're representing, uh, Mr. Satino and his wife Lori, the, the developer of the property. And so, um, Brandy pretty much addressed the project as it is to date. I just think it's important to, to note, on the, um, the, um, the zoning map, almost the entire corridor on, on Indian Trail Drive, highlighted in blue is a central business district. So, the simple request here is just to ask that we close that gap and, and rezone this from single-family to central business district, which makes the opportunity for our, um, client to purchase the property as a commercial property, instead of paying a commercial price for a single-family residential property. It just makes a lot more sense, um, for him or anybody in the future. If, if in fact this project doesn't proceed, it's still to be zoned to meet the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that Indian Trail has currently for this corridor. Um, that pretty much covers it.
So, he clearly has a, he has a contract on the property. He just needs to get it rezoned.
He is in discussions with the contract on the property. There's a couple of hangups right now. But one of them is the, the zoning is an issue. And the seller has pretty much given the, uh, the buyer till end of year to kind of make a deal. So, this is a hangup. It's a potential deal killer, just because, again, our client doesn't want to pay a commercial property price for a single-family, um, zoned property, which makes sense. Um, if it were zoned, CBD, which is in alignment with the rest of the corridor and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, it just makes the opportunity a lot more attractive for our, for our buyer.
Start then at, um, your end of the podium here. Any questions?
No, no, sir.
Mr. Sandy?
You mentioned a roundabout, or is the property owner or the buyer still willing to work with DOT as far as that roundabout?
As far as I understand, it is being pursued by NCDOT, but it's not being designed yet. So, it still weighs off. That answers your question.
Ms. Reese?
I make a motion to approve that the required consistency findings have been met.
We're not at the motion yet. You have any questions?
No.
Okay. No questions. Okay. All righty. So, everybody understand he's, at this point, trying to get it rezoned.
Yes.
So, he can put a product there.
Yes.
Okay. So, Tim, would you like to read out our?
Ms. Reese can continue on. Uh, as part of my presentation, I read into the record. I'll be glad to read that again if you'd like.
Okay. Now, if you'd like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, move to approve that the required consistency findings have been met as explained by staff.
And I second.
And we're second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. So.
Now, just approve or deny? So, that vote was for the consistency findings and the second vote for approval or denial?
I approve.
You make the motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
A second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you. Do we close, do we close now? And then we have our training afterwards? Or are we still in session with the train? Still in session with the train?
Still in session. Still in session.
Are we still on Facebook Live? For the training session?
Session for the training.
There should be one for you and Tim in there to follow along with. It's an open meeting.
There won't be any further business taking place, it's just gonna be the training, so, you know... I guess if you want to stick around, you stick around, and if not, you know...
The meeting is still open.
There's no business, no business gonna be done, so... Now we have a teacher.
Good evening. I wasn't sure when I was supposed to start, but anyway, I'm Karen Walter. I am the town attorney for Indian Trail, and I was asked to come in and walk through some basic planning training, planning board training with you all. My goal is that we have, this is a very interactive session tonight, with you all asking questions and trying to get any clarification you might need on some of these, on some of these planning board topics. This is not an easy job that you all have volunteered for, and I know that the citizens, the council, and the town staff is very grateful for the time and effort that you all put into this role that you have taken on. It's an important role in the town. You are advisors on very important policy related to how this town looks, grows up, changes, how people travel through it, how the water and sewer run through it. So it's a very important job, and we're grateful to have you here. And hopefully, tonight, we can give you some pointers and some general information about your role and how we can maximize the jobs that this board is tasked with performing for the town. Shortly, in short, what we're gonna talk about today is very basic information about the role of the planning board. We're gonna then talk, and then we're gonna move into some rules of procedure and sort of meeting management, and see if that can, if we can all come to agreement on a set of rules of procedure for meeting management. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about ethics and best practices. For all of you sitting as in your role, as now a public persona, you will be subject, and you are subject, to certain ethics rules and some best practices that'll keep everybody out of trouble and keep this board effective in its mission. So I've handed you two pieces of paper. The one we're starting with is the one with the Bringwell Walter-Snower top. And all this, all that's behind this first page is statutes and the UDO, information from the UDO. So all, your role, planning board's role, the town is authorized by North Carolina, the state of North Carolina, to create this planning board. The UDO, and that's gonna be your first page behind here. Effectively, what happens is the state delegates power to a local government to create this planning board. The state gives some general rules about what this, what a planning board can do, but we go to the specifics on that in the UDO. And if you'll go, flip over, you'll see a document that's headed UDO Chapter 220. And this really is the guts of what we want to talk about as your role in the town of Indian Trail. Fundamentally, the planning board is an advisory board to the town on issues related to planning, zoning, and land use. I wanted, I do want to give you a heads-up that the UDO is in the process of being revised. And so while this, this isn't gonna change the general rules, there'll probably be some specifics that we will be going through and that you all will be approving and walking through and getting a better understanding as we go through that UDO update process. If you look at Section 220.030, that outlines the powers and duties of this planning board in the town of Indian Trail. You see, there's a lot, there's a lot of little things, you know, the tree advisory committee. That, and then there's big things, the subdivision plat review, text amendments, zoning map amendments, conditional zonings, comprehensive plan administration. There are, you all are the front line, or the, I'm gonna call it actually the middle line, on any ordinance or any new law that the town of Indian Trail passes that affects zoning, planning, and land use in the town. One topic I really wanted to sort of dive into on your role is in the conditional zoning process. So conditional zoning, and we had one of these tonight, so that's an example of what we're talking about, and currently and historically in the last couple of years, it's been your primary job, has been conditional zoning, and reviewing and advising the council on conditional zoning plans. A conditional zoning, just to go very basic, is zoning by agreement. That's what a party has, is acquiring a piece of property or just putting it to use, and they want to create, what we're doing with conditional zoning is creating a new law for that parcel of property. So it's a new ordinance from the town that only applies to that piece of property. Okay? So basically, what we have to do is negotiate. The applicant, the owner of the property, brings the application to the town. We can't force it down to them. It has to come from the owner or the developer to the town, and then we negotiate what they can do and what they can use that property for. In this process, the staff does the lion's share of the work. So what'll happen, under our UDO, the applicant brings in information to the planning department, and currently, they've got 21 pieces of information that they are expected to provide planning department before they can even get in front of anybody, before their application is complete. And so what happens at our meetings here is staff has spent weeks, sometimes months, sometimes years, doing the back-and-forth with a developer, an attempt to get all the information that is required and to establish conditions that everyone agrees to. And so this happens in the background. So by the time it gets to this phase of the process, planning department has checked, or should have, checked those 21 boxes, plus probably some others. And if they haven't checked them, they will have an explanation why they haven't, that hasn't happened yet. And so when it comes to you all, the process is complete, and it's your turn to ask questions and understand the information that came from the developer to make this project work. Okay? Let's see. When it's in front of you, your job is to consider, you're looking for consistency. So A, you're looking for, and completion. So A, has the developer provided all the information they're required to provide? So that's the first question you all want to answer when you're sitting there on the board in a conditional zoning application. The second question you want to answer is, is this consistent with our land use plan and with the UDO? And if you could answer yes to those two questions, then generally, you're going to recommend approval of that conditional zoning application. Now, in the meantime, there's all kinds of things you can do also. You can ask for extra conditions. For example, questions like, "Do you have enough parking? Explain your parking idea to me." "Do you have enough facilities to support this development that you are proposing to our town?" "Is it, are you bothering the neighbors? Do you have enough screening? What's your landscaping like?" "Our roads are a mess. What's the timing of this? You don't, are you phasing your project? How is this gonna, how is this gonna go down over the course of years for our town and our citizens? What kind of road impacts are you going to have? What kind of public facilities are you providing? Are you providing enough open space?" So those types of questions that impact the community are absolutely fair game for you all to ask, and they're also fair game for you to request a condition to be included that says, "I see you've offered us 10 acres of open space. However, we want 20. Would you be willing to offer us 20?" Perfectly fair question to ask in a conditional zoning application process. Landscaping, okay, so normally, our UDO requires, you know, some tree every 15 feet. I'm just, I'm throwing that out there. However, the density you're trying to accomplish is gonna make the back of this neighborhood unattractive. We want more than that. We want you to double the landscaping buffer. Perfectly fair question to ask. And again, it doesn't happen unless they agree to it, but you have the right to bring up these issues until it hits a point that you're comfortable, you have protected, you have recognized the rights of the property owner while protecting the interests of all the citizens of the town of Indian Trail. Does that make sense? Okay, perfect. That's your job with regards to a conditional zoning application. And I would love to have questions or circumstances, any areas of concern, any questions, anything that's happened that was confusing. I would love you all to talk through some actual examples, if you all have any. Yeah, that's what Brandy was bringing up, is in the, in the application, one thing for today, let's talk about, a perfect example, is the stormwater issue that was, that was brought up today. So clearly, the, it's a completely legitimate concern for the neighbors. Stormwater is a highly regulated, both at the federal and state level and the local level. It's a highly regulated area of land use and land management. The town, the UDO, as part of the submissions for the application, the applicant is required to provide a stormwater management plan that meets the federal, state, and local criteria. We cannot, we cannot do something easier than the federal government or the state would require. And in fact, our rules are a little bit tighter than what the state would require generally for stormwater management. Unfortunately, we have the unfortunate experience of a 500-year flood that happened last year that is hitting home with residents right now. But as a planning board, you can certainly ask and make sure that they have done the right work on their stormwater management, but it's, but we really can't argue, or we can't second-guess the engineers and the professionals' opinions on these. We just don't have the expertise at this level. So, and again, I'm not, I do not want to say, "Don't ask questions," because you are absolutely free to ask until you understand them. But the line we don't want to cross is trying to put our own opinion in place of the experts. Yes, ma'am?
Karen, I'm just going to say one word: tree wick.
What's tree wick?
The developer did not do the project right.
Yeah.
And who was left holding the bag?
And that is, and that is, that, and you're gonna, this answer is not gonna be your favorite answer, but that is not the issue that you deal with up here. It gives you an absolute right to ask the question. Who's dealing, how does this, okay, so you've told us you're gonna perform A. How do you, how do I know you're gonna do that? And that question can go to staff, 'cause staff can say, we now have in-house stormwater management teams. We have XYZ going on, we have code enforcement, we have all of these tools at our disposal to make sure developers complete their projects correctly. What we can't do, though, is make them, if they have stopped or if they haven't started, and there's a project that's partway done, we really do not have a tool to force them to finish. So there isn't one. Now, and that, that is a problem that happens when the economy tanks and when things go wrong, a halfway-built project goes downhill. And so what do we do then? We try to take steps early in the process in the phasing area. The, I call it the white-pipe jungle nightmare, where you have a developer come in, tear every tree down, put the plumbing in, and put the, put the infrastructure in, and then sits, then the project sits for eight years with no houses on it, and it's a, it's a mess. Well, at this phase of planning, and what we can do at our level is say, "All right, well, we're not, what we don't want you to do is create the white-pipe jungle." So you can start with Phase 1. When you're done with that, we'll let you clear Phase 2. When you're done with that, we'll let you clear Phase 3. So we can avoid, there's tools in our toolbox to try to prevent that nightmare from happening. Many laws have changed recently with regard to road improvement, stormwater, and other infrastructure that have big impacts on especially things like ponds and dry detention and wet detention, and those kinds of issues that become problems 15, 20 years later for a neighborhood when they're never maintained properly. I think it was not till 2008 that there was a law about maintaining your ponds. And so anything that was built before 2008, we don't have any authority to tell them to do anything with. But after that, we do. And so those are, these, the laws continue to change for that very reason, but we, but there are tools in our toolbox. When you think of these topics that are of concern to you, bring them up in these meetings and say, "What can we do to avoid, you know, mistakes, or you not completing your development, or you, you know, we can help address that issue in the course of this process." Yes, sir?
Just to follow up on Michelle, on Michelle's question there. When they tell us they're gonna do something, and then they, then years later, we find out that what they did was in error, then what repercussions do we have? And my second question, you asked me, you told us not the question, the engineers and the experts, but don't we have experts on staff to manage that? Or can we not hire somebody on a contract basis to check the figures of these engineers when they come before us?
We do.
I mean, we don't need to be standing here flat-footed and just listen to what they got to say and then, and believe every word they say, because that's not happening.
Excellent point. Two things, I will never tell you not to ask a question. So you are absolutely, ask any question you want to that, to their engineers, to their experts. And we have on staff, people here who can say, "Okay, what he said, I verified." And so we do, at Indian Trail, we have a trust-but-verify system going on. So we have our own in-house engineers who are reviewing their engineer works. If you have a question that you, if you don't understand something that they're saying during their presentation, absolutely ask the question until they explain it to you in a manner that you understand. So always ask, always ask. But what we can't do is when they say, "We have built our pond to the 25-year flood requirement, and our engineer says, yes, they did," we're, at our level, including mine, of knowledge, we're out of it.
But we don't have them here. They were not here when they...
Yeah, Todd was here. They, we were here today, he was here today.
Engineer was here tonight?
He was. Yeah.
I mean, our engineer?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yep, yep.
Good.
And what's, excellent question, and it's something, this leads me to another, another talking point, which is communication with staff. So when you all receive your packet about what's gonna happen, if you're worried and if you had heard or seen the comments about flood zones and what have you, make, call Brandy and say, "We're gonna need the engineers here, because this is, seems like a legitimate question." question." They are your resource. This town staff is your resource. You need to use it as much as you can and as much as you need to.
Right. Following up on Michelle's question a while ago, 25 years later after the, Samantha, excuse me, 25 years later after the state's decision's been approved, and then we have a major flood or whatever else that they didn't figure for, what repercussions do we have? Do we have any legal way to go back after a developer? I mean, they're, they're already packing their bags and gone.
Generally not. And, and so, because we are, what we'll do, we hold infrastructure bonds. So when a developer is creating, building roads, when they are creating stormwater ponds, when they're building the infrastructure for their development, we hold what's called a performance bond, and if they don't finish it the right way, we have the money from the developer to go ahead and finish it. Now that, so that's our, that's our guarantee that they did it right the first time. If they, if HOA or somebody doesn't maintain their infrastructure, we really don't have, if, so long as it remains private, we really don't have recourse for an improperly maintained private piece of infrastructure. Generally now, however, the neighborhoods will turn the roads over for maintenance to the towns, so we'll get the roads, and that'll be the town's responsibility, and we have a maintenance program on all stormwater ponds. So, so long as we make, so long as the town maintains its enforcement, enforcement rules and enforcement opportunities, then these things shouldn't happen.
Or you're saying the town gets the roads? I understand that part, but the detention ponds, do, are we, we, the Town of Indian Trail, maintaining those detention ponds?
We are not. Those, those remain, they have maintenance bonds on detention, that's correct, right?
For how long?
Ever, forever. So they...
They have to periodically come out and, and cross-section the ponds and be sure they've not sealed it in full?
We have, that's...
And if they do, then they have to go back out and, and clean them out?
Yes, and we just, and, 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 no, just so you know, we have, Todd has recently sent out notices for, it's gonna be an annual maintenance review. He has sent out notices to every single detention pond owner in the city, or in the town, and we are working through that process right now. They have to provide an engineer's report to the town certifying that they're taking care of their ponds. This is a new thing, so your questions are excellent, because this was not the law of the land until recently. And so that's happening now.
Does HOA do this? Or if the contractor's out of business and gone, it's the HOA?
HOA will generally take over all the infrastructure that was, that was the developers'. And again, that's part of the process, and it's, these, we get in trouble during recessions, and we get in trouble when the developers lose all their money, because you, you end up, and this is 2007, which the, this town happened to have a bunch of neighborhoods that kind of fell into the cracks when the economy tanked. And so you've had a developer who had big plans and couldn't do anything, and then as the, as the economy started picking up again, somebody else took over their undeveloped property, and we, and so, so it, we had, we had a rough spell, and we also did not have the appropriate legal tools to force compliance with stormwater in particular. And so now that we've got new law in place, and we're all sort of aware of what happened in the past, we are, we're taking steps to try to avoid that in the future.
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Go ahead.
My topic is not on the water park.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, my topic is on conditional zoning when it comes to school impacts, road impacts, and traffic impacts. Can we ask, 'cause there's a lot of times, 'cause I ask questions based on what I hear from the public.
Yes.
Because that is a concern, because I want, I want to make sure that as a town, we are taking care of taxpayers that's in, that's in existence, because it would be a shame that we continue to build, I mean, it's great that we're building, but it would be a shame to keep building all these wonderful subdivisions, and then you lose the, those who were foundations of this town.
Absolutely true.
You know, and because we are not good neighbors, we're not bringing in good neighbors.
That's right.
So I ask questions based on that. So my question, as a parent with three children in a public school, you know, what's the condition when it comes to school impacts, road impacts, traffic impacts? Is there something in here that I need to know about that? So that way, when I ask questions during a meeting, I'm not, like, like you said, crossing the line.
And you, and that is an excellent, I, thank you for bringing it up. So I'm trying to figure, as a general rule, we, this town, no, town in North Carolina, can ask a developer to, to perform any task in a conditional zoning situation that is not directly related to his impact on, that the project's impact on the infrastructure. So for example, when they, when they say the DOT was not requiring any road improvements on DOT roads because of this, we can't force them. We can't say, "Well, you can't have, I don't care what DOT says, I want a left-turn lane here." We cannot turn down a conditional zoning application on those grounds. Schools, we cannot turn down a conditional zoning application because of the impact on schools. Again, this is relatively new law. In the last three or four years, the state, the Supreme Court of the North Carolina has come out with these infrastructure impact rules, the theory being, we shouldn't treat the first guy who got here early better than the guy who, who held on to his property, you know, until the end, and now can't get someone to develop on it. So that being said, we can ask, we, so we can ask, "Hey, you, you want to build a 1,000-acre neighborhood with, you know, bajillion houses? Would you consider holding some land for a school? Would you, you know, for, for a, for a public purpose, which could be a school or a fire department?" So we can ask those, we can make those requests of the developer. But we cannot turn the project down for those specific reasons. And again, asking is fine, and, and asking the questions and making them explain to you, how do you think, you, you know, adding 5,000 people in this section, this impact, how do you, you know, what is that gonna do to the rest of the people in this neighborhood, you know, in these neighborhoods? How is that gonna, how is that gonna impact everybody? You can ask that question.
I guess my, I guess my question to you guys would be, like, when businesses are, are, I guess, business, or companies are built, I should say, that comes in that wants to build subdivisions, do you, I mean, I know you can't turn people down, but do you, during the planning process, do you like, try to help them understand the impacts on the schools? Like, you know, 'cause that's important to, 'cause most people move here, honestly, like I did, with children, and, and they came here because Union County has very good schools. And now what's happening, as you may be fully aware of this, now, in the past eight years, they've been popping up a lot of charter schools because of the overcrowdedness of a lot of these great schools. We have a lot of, we have like six or seven schools that are A schools now, you know, like the A-level schools. And we want to continue to maintain it, as I educated myself in the school system, we want to continue to maintain the integrity of our, you know, of our schools. But I guess my question to you guys, and it's just, you know, you can discuss that to me at another point, but like, when people come, when an individual comes and say, "We want to build a 250, you know, home resident or whatever, and this impact is gonna, and you know it's gonna impact Porter Ridge, or Sun Valley, or, you know, whatever, what do you, can you advise them beforehand before they come to us?" I mean, I know you can't turn them down, but can you advise them? I guess the law, is it legally, just to, you know, advise them to maybe go talk to the board, or do you offer advice?
So, so just, I mean, so when somebody shows up, they're, they're, in this situation, they're trying to change the zoning. They want, so, so this town has already decided, this is, you know, SF1 zoning. So that's what, that's what we're comfortable with, this is what we're good with. If you want to change that to SF5, which is going to impact our schools, our roads, our, the look of our neighborhoods, you're gonna have to really want it, and you're gonna have, you're gonna have to show the town why it's more in our interest to have an SF5 development here over an SF1.
Okay.
And that is the way we would communicate density, rather than saying, you, you know, this family neighborhood here would impact the schools too much. We would say, "We're pretty comfortable with the density zoning here. This is a very, there's lots of, lots of action going on, the schools are crowded, the roads are busy." So we would say that, that's, that's how that would be communicated, rather than saying, "Too many kids going to the school."
Exactly.
Does that make sense? That's right. And that, and that's why we have them do the traffic impact analysis, and so we've got professional studies, we've had the school analysis, all of that is required by the developer, so that they have a talking point, they can prove that their impacts are not going to be that dramatic, and that they are, and that they are accommodating for those impacts, except for the school area. Yes.
Can you give me, well, I'm sorry, can you give me an example of a question, 'cause I was, I'm sorry, that I, that I can, like, give me an example, like, let's say you already have the, the stuff already lined up, like, not, you know, Sun Valley High School has 95% capacity, Shiloh Elementary has 95 capacity, you know, Sun Valley Elementary has 95% capacity, or overcapacity. And now they want to pop up a subdivision in the corner of Rogers Road, and, you know, can you give me an example of what type of question can I ask, since it's already approved? Let's say this was a situation at the corner of Rogers Road and Wesley Chapel, they want to pop up a small subdivision there.
It's not approved. And you need to, but when it gets to you, this is, nothing's been approved when it gets to you.
Okay, when it gets, okay.
Nothing's been approved. So this is, the staff has reviewed all the information, and what the staff is telling you is, is basically, they have complied with our UDO requirements for application, and now you all are making the policy decisions, or helping this council make the policy decisions, which are, is this SF1 zoning, are we better off keeping it small, or is, are we okay with the density? And then we consider, in the Town of Indian Trail, our goals are A, B, C, D, E. So then that, your job is to take what they're offering you, and you can say, "Listen, we've got tons of density in here, we've got tons of, of single-family homes, this is not, you know, this is not a good idea, because it provides, all, we're getting more of the same."
Okay.
And we want diversity in our housing. Or it can be, we, we don't have enough of this density, and we love this, tons of green space, and how you've set your neighborhood up, so we're good with that. So, so that's your, your option, and you can go, you can ask about schools, you just can't make your decisions.
Okay.
On that, you can't say, "We're turning down this..."
Because of the impact on the schools.
"...application because you're impacting the schools."
No, no. I just wanted you to know that you can go on the Union County Public Schools. They have assessments.
Yes.
And they have the study. And maybe it will help with your decision making.
And just on that note right there, you all represent the Town of Indian Trail, not Union County. And so you're, what you, what you need to be experts on is the town's comprehensive plan, the land use plan, that is, your job is to go do that research and find out, and if, what this town has historically created documentation and, and information about where we want to go. And so this is, that's your job, is to do what the Town of Indian Trail has stated as its policy, 'cause I came from council. So council approved this comprehensive plan and land use plan, and that's your job to make sure that whatever's coming through is meeting that plan. So if it's, we want to remain a rural bedroom community, then your votes on increasing density would probably be contradictory to that plan. If it was, which is Indian Trail's plan is, is there's clumps of, you know, density in industrial and commercial, and if, if the plan's coming through and it's, it falls within that plan, and that, that predetermined policy plan that was passed by council, then your, that's what you're looking for, to make sure that this idea that came from a developer fits within that long-term plan that the town council developed and passed So that's your homework. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Any more questions on the conditional zoning?
I have a question. The workshops, like that, that item that came before us today. He threw me off a minute when he said we talked to town council. So by the time that it comes to us, just, you know, I'm looking for our recommendation, it has already been through all the stages, from the minute they walked in downstairs to throw the paper and pay their money, to, for the application fee, and that's already happened? What are, what are the percentages of, like, tonight, that they've gone and actually sat council and discussed these projects before we even...
That is an excellent question. And I, so when we started, when I started here at Indian Trail, I think it was January of 2017-ish, it might have been, I don't remember anymore, but we recommended that the town begin the pre-development process. The reason that we recommended that for conditional zoning applications is because it saves everybody a ton of time and a ton of money. What we ask at pre, at pre-development, the workshops, is that somebody brings, say, basically a sketch plan, and they say, "Okay, here's my idea for this piece of property. Town council, do you like it?" And we've had several, like, "No, not, don't even go away," like, not even a chance. And so that, that, that idea is off the table. We have some, like the one tonight, where he heard the, the information from the council at the pre-development meeting, changed the plan considerably, and then brought it into count, brought it back to planning for the application. So all the, the pre-development is doing is really helping direct the developer before he spends a ton of money, because this process is really expensive.
Yeah, yeah, and that was another thing that I wanted to ask, as, how long does the application process take, number one? And number two, is there a way that we can know as a board if the presenter has already, has had some of their actual counsel on this? Because that tells me a lot, if I, if I know that, you know, town council has already spoken to them.
That should be irrelevant, frankly. So, and, and that's something we're working on. So you all have a completely different role in this process, and so you have developers who play the politics, and who'll be making the phone calls, and that's perfectly legal. They can call you all, I don't recommend you talk to them, but you, but it's not illegal for developers to make the phone calls and for, just to help, and, and some will do it in a, in a, for a good reason, which is to, "All right, I was, you know, I, I wanted to do this type, this size of a neighborhood, but, you know, but, but I don't feel an appetite for that, where am I at?" So there might be a good reason to do it. Lots of times, it's flat-out lobbying, so...
Would you say is the percentage of the amount of those people that come up here, that they attend workshops or council?
Oh, it should be, for conditional zoning, it should be all of them.
Okay.
So they will all, but, but that being said, that's all, that's, that should be the only communication. So they've all been through at least one, but that, that does not need to carry into your analysis at all. So, because council has, we don't even know what advice they may have taken from council at that point. Whatever application shows up at the front door, Brandy can, I'm, I really don't know the length of the process, and Brandy might be able to help you with that, but you are the first policymakers who see that plan as it's been, after it's been through the, the wringer.
The workshops are through after.
And just to speak to the, the timeframe, it, it really varies based on how motivated the developer is. We've also, of course, seen things were handled a little differently by, by previous staff members, and so we've seen a lot that, that stayed in the process a little bit longer than I personally think is, is necessary. So we're working to, to get the process a little bit more smoother. So staff doesn't really control the yes or no, but I think there is a little bit of control as to how long it takes to get to the process. And the longer it takes, the more expensive it is for the developer. So if ultimately it's gonna be no, we should get them to know as fast as we can. Right? So, but once it goes, you know, it goes to development workshop, some projects come back again. You know, if they get some negative feedback, they come back to council, so they may go to development workshop more than once. So that could be a couple of months' process, and then there's a couple of months in between where they're going from the sketch plan to more of a conceptual plan, they're ordering their TIA's, their school impact studies, so they're getting everything ready. We schedule community meetings once we know that those plans are underway and expected to receive those pretty soon. So it's another month or two gap. Then they appear at planning board the next month. If everything goes well, they'll go to town council. And then from there, if they get approval, it's normally maybe six to nine months when they're actually coming up with full construction drawings, and before we see them back for permitting. Now that's, that's an expedited, motivated developer. Sometimes, you know, other projects become bigger priorities, and so it takes a lot longer for the engineering, or they run into problems, or the, you know, the soil samples come back bad, and they've got, you know, things to remediate. There's, there's a lot of factors in that process, so it could go a lot longer, but that's, that's a general idea of the timeframe.
If I could, if I could make something, if you could mention that, it's, the workshop part is totally before any application's submitted.
Yes.
So we're not really doing our full investigation work and stuff.
If you'd be just anybody saying, "Hey, I wanna build a chicky chitty on the corner over there, where they face..."
That's right.
It's more input before an application, so they have to hone it and get it as good as possible, before we really can get down to the really real line. That's sad.
I think it's a good idea, if you can't come to the council meetings and, and look, and even watch the, come see the workshops, you can get online and watch them. And so for the planning board, if you can't get away and come for a council meeting, it's, it's good to watch it online, just to, it kind of gives you a feel of what the council is looking for, and what they'll approve, what they won't approve. It gives you an idea of what may be coming up in the future as far as projects.
Yeah, and that's, that's what's coming up, and also, it's, to me, you know, maintain your independence on this, though, you know, you really, because you all are the ones who are going, are doing the heavy lifting on policy and, you know, land use plan, and to make sure that those things are matching up. And so, you are an independent advisory board, so just remember that component to what your role is as well. Okay? Are we good on that topic? I wanted to flip to one more thing, if, if that's good. This is taking longer than we should, but-
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
The second document I gave you. Well, the other topic I wanted to discuss was, was meeting management, and sort of how, how the board, how a board meeting runs for small, and I'm gonna call this a small parliamentary board, this is very similar to the town council. People will, people will, you know, you'll, you'll hear Roberts Rules of Order, well, Roberts is great for the British Parliament and Congress, but when you only have five folks up in, it's a little, it's a little burdensome. And so what the state of North Carolina has done is shrink, shrunk those rules for small boards in the state. What I gave you today is a, I looked through several towns' rules of procedure for their planning boards, and this was one of my, this one I really liked and thought this was a good start, it certainly will tweak it for Indian Trail, but I wanted to give you all an outline of, of what you should expect at a, at a planning board meeting, and what your jobs are. And then this also has a great list of what I'm gonna call best practices, so some ethical guidelines and best practices. What I would like to do is, I'll take this and tweak it, I'll give it to Brandy and staff here, and then we'll give you a tweaked version of this, and for you all to review and, and then discuss and decide to approve, or some version of this, anyway, that will become the rules of procedure for the planning board of the town of Indian Trail. I think this is helpful not only to you, but to future boards, and it will, um, help everybody understand and remember what their role is, and, and keep meetings on track and projects on track. A couple of things I wanted to just point out, just some global topics on this. The first, the job of the chairman, and Dennison, Brandy and I discussed this, the chair's job is to run the meeting. So his, his primary job is to make sure that the meeting runs smoothly. You'll see there's a list of what his actual official powers are, that doesn't mean he still can participate, and he can participate in the conversations and in the questioning, and he also gets to vote, but he's the one in charge of the meeting, and that's how you control, crowd control, which to me is a very important component of these meetings, especially when they're controversial. And also, board control, you all are very polite and, and to each other, that doesn't always happen. So this is a good example of how a board should function, but that doesn't always happen. And so having a chair who has the authority to kind of, you know, shut you up, and then also, everyone's respectful of the rules, of you don't speak until you're, until you're addressed, those kinds of things just help the board run smoother. The hearing procedure, you all have one similar, but that's, I watched it today, that was great. I do, the, the suggested here has an applicant rebuttal, and so you have, you give the, the staff speaks, the applicant speaks, then you have public hearing, and then you have a rebuttal from the, so that the, the developer can get up and, or the applicant can get up and answer questions, an option, just something that, that can happen at that point. And then you all performed perfectly with your questions and everything afterwards, so that's exactly how that, that portion of a meeting should run. One thing that, there's some, there's some, the public address to the board topic, that I would really, I'm not a fan of the secondary questioning and the questions from the, from the floor after public hearings closed. So that's something that we can read through these rules and determine the best way to have that handled here in-house. All questions should be directed to the, to the board, and then you all direct it to staff, or to, to the applicant and his experts. So there should be no questions coming from the audience directly to a developer, or from the audience directly to a staff member. That is for this board to manage. So that's just another, and again, practice and, and being aware should usually helps. The final topic I wanted to discuss is, involves some of the ethical rules, the, and the voting rules, that you all are going to be subject to. The biggest one is that you may not vote on a decision that you or a member of your family has a financial interest in, a personal or financial interest in. From the, the very strict legal interpretation, there must be a financial benefit, a direct financial benefit. As a best practice, or as an alternative practice, there's a little bit of the appearance of impropriety. I happen to take a fairly conservative view on this. Your obligation as a board member is to disclose any, anything that you, that doesn't feel quite right. You know, if it's your neighbor, if your kids are friends at school, if, if you have a prop, you own a property, or your mother owns a property next door to a new development, so that, those issues have to be disclosed, and you all disclose them publicly. And then it will be a vote of this board, whether you are recused or not. Some are super easy, you know, "It's my project," you know, you're, some aren't quite as clear. North Carolina law is, you, you, you can't recuse yourself on a close call, it would have to be the full board voting to agree to that. Brandy is, she'll, she'll be a great, I will not be at most meetings, she'll be a great advisor on that. So, and if you have questions, she'll be able to help you all make that determination, which way to go. Err on the side of recusing, that's an easier fight to have with a mad developer than, you know, voting when, when it was fuzzy. So, anyway, that's just one thing. But remember, if you have any personal interest, or a family member has an interest in the topic that you're voting on. This document also has what I'm gonna call, they call it ethical principles in planning, to me, these are best practices, and it's, much of it's very obvious. You may not take money from somebody who's got a matter before you. The, your primary interest is recognizing the rights of the citizens to be involved in this process. You, you yourselves are citizens of the town of Indian Trail, you are volunteers here. This, the, the elected officials, the staff, and the public has a right to be here. And so if they're here to speak, it should be the policy of this board, just line them up and let them talk. That's, that, they, they have a right to participate. That being said, you do not need to have any rude behavior, or any aggressive, out-of-order, this has, in an orderly process, everybody should have a right to participate. It's confusing to people who are in the audience. This is a really complicated, land use and planning and development is a complicated mess. And so asking the questions is, what you're not, you're not only giving yourselves answers, you are providing information to the public who's watching the meeting, or who's participating in the audience, that is so important. I thought that the stormwater conversation went beautifully tonight, because that's exactly, it's a confusing topic, they had legitimate concerns, you all focused on that problem, got answers from both the, or from the, from the engineer, that satisfied all of, you appear that they were in compliance with what we're asking them to do. So I thought that went great. But that's, by asking questions, you're not only getting your own question answered, you're providing information to the general public, and so I think that's an important component of your job as planning board members. Those are the big ones. And like I said, the goal is, we'll, we'll, we'll provide you all with a draft document that you can review, and I would think in the next couple of months, maybe have it on as an agenda item for y'all to review and consider for approval, a recommendation, with the, the council would have to approve it, but, but recommend to council that you adopt these rules of procedure for planning board. So that's to, to come in the future. Anything, any other questions we, that you all might have, or that you want to just, since I'm sitting here tonight, I can help answer for you? All right. That's all I got. Thanks for taking the time.
Thanks for coming over and helping us out.
Thank you.
I hope it was helpful. I know it's a ton of information at once, but again, I guess the big goal, the big leave-behinds are, ask your questions, learn the, the comprehensive plan and land use plan, as, 'cause that's your guiding, those are your guiding bibles right now. And thank you for your time and what you're doing for the town.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we're adjourned now? Should we take a vote now, I guess? Do we have a, yeah?
I'm making my history, Jim?
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Stand up.
Stand up.
Stand up.